Thank you all for your patience online. I'm going to go ahead and call to order the city council meeting of Tuesday, July 8th, 6:00 PM. If you would join me in the pledge of allegiance as we begin. The flag is on the other side. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Can I get a roll call, please?
Here.
Conley.
Present.
Daniel.
Here.
Davis.
Here.
Ronnie.
Yes.
Ruth.
Here.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to adopt the agenda. I will call out that there's a couple of agenda items that have the little star next to them, so.
I move to adopt the agenda as written.
Second.
Okay, motion from Councilmember Conley. I heard the second from Councilmember Ronnie, because she's the closest. Discussion at the table? All right, roll call vote, please.
Conley?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Ruth?
Yes.
All right. I will entertain a motion regarding the minutes of June 24th, 2025.
I need to approve the minutes of June 24th, 2025.
I'll second.
Is there a point of order from Councilmember Conley?
I have something to say.
Yes. Regarding?
Page nine, on the exchange of real property, I voted no.
Oh, okay, hold on, we're about to start the discussion on minutes. So this, I have a motion from Councilmember Conley, a second from Councilmember Ronnie. Discussion at the table, please. Councilmember Rude.
Is at the bottom of page nine, I voted no for the exchange of property.
Okay. And it's reflected at the end.
It says it was 6-0 and it was not 6-0.
Yes, I remember.
I don't have my notes in front of me, but I think that's correct.
Okay. I also had one on page 11, there was no public health and safety report, and there was. It was brief, but it was there.
It was a brief public health and safety report?
It was a brief public health and safety report.
Okay. I am aware of a motion from the public. There were some comments that were entered in relation to the public hearing on utility rates, as well as the public hearing on the CIP.
Yes.
And those came in Monday, so they were not included in the package, but our council minutes say that we will introduce those and include them, attach them to the minutes. So per request, I would entertain a motion for somebody to attach that correspondence to these minutes.
I move to amend the minutes to reference two written comments by William Poisey received 6/23/2025 in reference to the public hearing on capital improvement plan and the water sewer rating cases.
I will second.
Are we going to include the John Clayton as well? Are you doing modern sewer separates?
No.
Was there a separate, I just saw him as a CC on it.
It was a continuation of the.
Oh, it was just, you did good.
Yes.
Okay.
So, just to be clear, this is discussion on the motion specifically to include the two public comments as part of the minutes? We'll come back and look for the other edits, just because we kind of started down that path. Any discussion on the two comments? Quick vote?
Conley?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Ruth?
Yes.
Okay, back to the main motion. I've heard a couple of different amends. I have not heard a formal motion to accept those and include those in the minutes. Can I get that?
I move to accept the minutes as amended.
Okay, and that included, to be clear, a comment from Councilmember Rude, and also a comment from Councilmember Conley updating the notes on the public safety discussion. Were there any other amendments, or any other changes to be included? Harry Noah, pardon?
One second.
Oh, I'm sorry. The motion was from Councilmember Conley.
Conley.
In a second, we'll go with Daniels.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And again, so this is a vote on the motion to approve as amended.
Approve as amended.
Okay, so this is back to the main motion then. All right. Let's go ahead and get a vote.
Conley?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Ruth?
Yes.
Six-oh, the motion passes. Thank you for keeping me straight on that. I will entertain a motion for warrants payable.
Do you have the numbers?
I do not, I didn't sign them today.
I signed them, but I didn't make a tally, sorry.
What are the numbers?
I emailed them.
I'll get the numbers here real quick.
I emailed you, so I don't have it.
I will make a motion to approve the minutes.
The warrants.
Of the warrants payable.
In the amount?
In the amount of $242,677.50. Sorry, those are sloppy, but there.
All right, motion from Councilmember Tupin, I believe the second, from Councilmember Conley. Discussion at the table?
The only question that I had had on that was the $16,000 for the short-term rental software. That's apparently a yearly fee, and I wanted to make sure that it was still paying for itself. And Ronnie does say that, yes, it is still paying for itself. I think it discovered 98 new short-term rentals, so.
In the time we've had it, yeah.
In the time that we've had it, so.
Yeah.
That was my question, at the $16,000.
And, to be clear, this is now a new vendor, and we have some added ability for people to pay their resort taxes online within that. Most, it is worth noting that most, if not all, but certainly a high preponderance of the resort tax appeals we have heard have been related to vacation rentals.
Yes.
So hopefully this will help solve that as well.
And it's something we just need to keep an eye on, considering that the state is going to charge short-term rentals a 68% increase in their property taxes, so I suspect that we're going to have less short-term rentals than we've had in the past. And so we just need to keep an eye on it.
Any other discussions regarding the warrants payable?
I just want to confirm that it's one of, are we still paying for two softwares, or just one now?
So, there was going to be a slight overlap, and I don't know that we ended up doing that. We were able to negotiate our way out of doing that, but there was, like I said, that was, we anticipated there would be a charge, we just didn't, we timed it right.
Thank you, just wanted to confirm.
Appreciate that. Councilmember Davis?
And we've had this software for one year now?
No. So we've had a previous version of this package for two years.
Three years.
Three years?
Three years, yeah.
Going on a third year.
Yeah, we're going into our third. So we've had it for two, and we're now switched to a different software company to perform the same function, plus some. And part of that same function, by the way, is it goes out and scrapes all of the vacation rental sites, so VRBO, Airbnb, et cetera. And the company that we were with was dropping behind the curve.
Are you in closed session still?
No, no, we're in open session. And so they were dropping behind the curve and not keeping up, so that was part of what initiated the move to another package, and they also brought some additional functionality.
And it's supposed to be a little bit more user-friendly.
That'd be awesome.
Okay, discussions from the table on warrants payable. Hearing none, may I get a vote?
Conley?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Ruth?
Yes.
Six-oh, the motion passes. All right. All right, Mayor's comments. Fourth of July summary, good week. We do not have, we're hoping to get some actual hard data to put our hands on from the chamber, using the new software package that they have. Anecdotal data says that it was a good week. We anticipate that it was very likely the busiest Friday, or the busiest fourth we've ever had. It'll be interesting to see if the data reflects that. We did get our reports from our public safety, and there were not really anything significant or notable due to that. We also had the carnival in town. It did not do as well as they had hoped, so we will have follow-up conversations and find out if they're interested in reaching out again in the future, but also, I'm pleased there was no issues related to that at all. And the parking, they actually didn't end up using any of the, they had a lot of designated parking set aside that didn't end up getting used at all, it was just that the crowds were small enough, no, that they parked along the road and/or in the little one across the way at the top of.
Isn't that Van Dyke?
No, 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 this is like on the face of the hill, not the south end. So it didn't get anywhere near as, down as far as Van Dyke. For public notice, this Saturday is going to be Arbor Day at 10 o'clock at Field School Park, so down here in town. They're going to have a public meeting and get-together, they'll be reading the proclamation. I will not be there in person for that, I've got another conflict. And they're going to be planting about 15 trees, I think, there, and then they're planting some trees in conjunction with the bank reconstruction project that we did down Ninth and Tenth and Cooper. There was some trees that got removed in that process. Following that initial announcement, there is going to be, for the public, a pruning seminar, they're going to have an arborist there that's talking about how to properly prune trees. It's worth noting that we do not have surplus trees that we will be giving to residents this year, so I just want to call that out because that was different from past years. And again, that's this Saturday, the 12th, at 10 o'clock. On the 17th, which is next Thursday, we are going to have a public informational meeting regarding the EDA Street. This is the street project that we've been doing, and there's several roads that are impacted by that. That information is posted online, and we'll be reaching out to those along that line in person between now and then. It's basically just kind of an informational meeting to let folks know what's going on. There's still a lot of TBDs to be determined as far as timelines, that actually haven't gone out to bid yet, so while we are moving forward with that, if I were a betting man at this point, I would guess it's highly likely that some of that road construction is going to happen this year, and some of it's going to actually complete next year. But we'll have better information, and so that'll be Thursday at 5:00 PM here in the council chambers. We will have that available online using the regular, did you put out a separate link? I don't think we had a separate link on that, so we'll probably just use our regular city council link for that, for anybody who wants to join that from the main page. We are officially in construction season, so we have several projects you're going to see happening between now and the end of the year. We've got a sewer lining project that's going to start in September. Streets, I've already mentioned, is a little bit to TBD. The 16-inch bypass, which will affect traffic on the lower portion of White Avenue, our start date is mid-July, so I anticipate within the next week or two, we're going to see that. Late July, there's going to be some maintenance, basically rehabilitating the pump track up at Coal Miner's Field, that's going to happen after football camp, so that'll be late July that that happens. And then in early August, that first weekend of August, they are resurfacing the pickleball tennis courts down. We'll talk a little bit more about that one when we move to the council business part of the discussion, just to make sure we're kind of in line there. The Rocky Fort property, we have on the agenda, so I'll wait and discuss further there, but basically we have on the agenda tonight to award that bid and move forward with getting that property taken down. That is, I'm still working on the budget, as far as being able to communicate that to the masses. The budget I had pictured in my head last year, I have figured out how to make it work technologically now, so we'll get that out. And then we have our public works director with us tonight to talk about that once we get to council business and kind of do a little bit further in that, but that'll be basically a month out from this week. It'll be the first meeting in August that we anticipate doing that, so I imagine you're going to see a lot of updates, and you'll want to kind of just, the public will want to keep an eye on that as it moves forward. Any other questions for me, or anything else that I was requested to report on that I may have missed? All right, hearing none, that'll conclude the mayor's report. At this point, what we'll do is we'll open the meeting up for public comment. For those who may not join us regularly, there will be an opportunity now at the beginning of the meeting for public comment, this is for anything in the council's purview. There will also be a corresponding public comment at the end of the meeting, that you can speak on anything within the council's purview. And then any of our action items, we also allow public comment there. You're only allowed to speak once per public comment period. If you're speaking about something that is on the agenda, I would recommend or encourage you to consider saving your comments until that point, but I know sometimes people's schedules vary, so you're welcome to take advantage of any of those. If you do have public comment, the green glow in the front is what the public can hear out there. If you would stand to the podium, introduce yourself, and then you have three minutes to address your comments toward me. Just to be clear, it's not a public discussion or debate session, it's your opportunity to be heard by the council. And with that, I will go ahead and open the public comment. I will start with anybody in the room who would like to speak, you have the podium. Seeing no activity in the room, I'll go to online. If you would either turn on your camera, raise a hand, or go ahead and unmute, then I can see that there's activity online. Going once, going twice, which is code for I'm not seeing activity, three times, we'll go ahead and close the public comment. All right, with that, we'll move into the action portion of our agenda. I will entertain a motion for resolution 3704.
I will make a motion to approve resolution number 3704, a resolution to adopt the 2025 Red Lodge growth policy update.
I will second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Tupin, a second from Councilmember Daniels. We will start with discussion at the table.
So as you all know, sent out some amendments that we discussed at our last meeting, as well as at land use and planning. Specifically, we had a few different concerns, just some of it was minor edits, some of it was some specific language, trying to tone that down just a bit, or trying to be more specific on certain language. We put it out to the full council to create their amendments or questions, suggestions that they may have in the previous weeks, so that way we could address it, get it on paper, and make this as easy a process as possible. This morning at land use and planning, we did have Jeff Benedetto, as well as Sandy Conley from Planning Board there, to help guide with that as well, just to make sure that our amendments and thought process are aligned with the planning boards as well. So, I'm not sure, would you guys like me to go through this line by line, and then I can answer reasonings as asked, for questions?
I think in the interest of moving things forward, kind of what I pictured was a motion to amend, to include those that handed out. I failed, when I printed this off for everybody, I failed to print additional copies.
For the public.
To be available to the public. Ronnie, could I have you go burn an extra half dozen copies of that, so that people who are interested? The other thing we could do alternatively, if you wanted to join the meeting and present, you could share yours, so folks online could be able to see that. We'll make sure that we make you a co-host.
I think that's a fair thing to do, I think it's good for.
Yeah, I'm trying to think what's the best way to get that out. And then, to be clear, there is also an additional comment from the public on that issue. We had a letter from Jeremy Battles, that everyone has received a copy of, that will be part of the discussion as well. And then once we get done with that motion, all discussion related to that, and a vote on that motion, my understanding is there's a second motion to be made for a much smaller subset, just kind of laying out as I stall while Ronnie creates those copies. I apologize for not anticipating that and thinking about that in advance, it was a very crowded afternoon.
Absolutely. Mr. Mayor, so we're going to include Jeremy Battles' notations, as well as the one that...
His are public comments, part of the public.
His are in public comments, and I'm just making sure I don't loop and not include that.
Part of the public hearing, because we didn't include the public comments for the public hearing for very good, for Poisey.
Okay, so that's.
So this is part of the record, or the public hearing.
So, but yours are the new ones, besides the ones that she sent out.
Right, because I, after, she incorporated a lot of mine.
We gotta go. Do we want to just run this while he's doing side work, so we can get it done?
Yeah, just do it.
Cool, awesome.
Because everybody can see it, right?
So, and I will try and zoom in for those online and here in the room, just because I know it is fairly small. So these are the amendments that we came up with, and if anyone has the growth policy in front of them, they can read along a little bit better, but we tried to make this very easy and concise to amend. So specifically, I will just kind of go through these. One of our amendments, under action plans, our goals, objectives, and action plans for land use. One of the objectives and goals, one, ensure new development with historic overlay continues with the historic and architectural neighborhood character. The reasoning, we made this change, it was just a slight change, but the way it read before was, it was for the entirety of Red Lodge, so as I'm sure many of us know, if you go up to the golf course, those aren't necessarily historically accurate homes.
For the time period.
So we, it felt like it was good to kind of keep that honed into the.
Historic district.
The historic district, so. For goal number four, objective, adding a bullet point, review the city zoning regulations and state statutes to provide specific regulation for marijuana businesses that ensures the public health and safety of the community, as well, or ensures the public health and safety of the community, as well as maintains the historic uses of our downtown. This was per legal advice a few months ago, just to keep, make sure that we are addressing this in our zoning codes, this is one thing, and addressing this in our growth policies, this is to keep us legal within state statutes. Then objectives, goal number five, objectives, first bullet point, support the city's adopted energy conservation plan and implemented night sky standards within the city zoning regulation, with consideration to maintaining the vibrant character and safety of our historic downtown. This changed from creating an entire night sky, or dark skies initiative, so specifically, we already have, and I actually put where these came from, we have night sky standards implemented already within our zoning code, and they are proven to be working. For new developments, they, there's about, again, there's numerous pages of different regulations and standards that you must meet for your exterior lighting, so that's downward-facing lights, certain amount of lumens, all of those types of pieces. So we already felt we had this in place, we just wanted to continue to support that, as well as support our conservation plan, which we already have adopted, and continue to just inform people and educate people, so we can continue to make those positive steps forward. Goal number five, actions, this goes hand in hand with that, so supporting the night sky standards that are already in place by continuing to increase awareness and enforcing the outdoor lighting regulations that we have within our zoning code. So just making sure we're staying on track with that. We don't felt, again, we did not feel that there was a need to create an entire another initiative when we already have the structure in place. So then goals, objectives, action plans, local services. Goal number two, objective, preserve current access to public lands and Rock Creek, and pursue easements and opportunities for property acquisition that increase access. So the original statement was just a little contradictory, we felt that this cleaned it up to more accurately show its intent. Then we have goal seven, first bullet point, continue to improve the solid waste and recycling services to be more efficient and effective, with consideration of safety, wildlife, and accessibility. There was the proposal to create a whole new action plan for our solid waste and recycling, which again is, and we have ordinances already in place, many of those things, but obviously we can always continue to improve, so just keeping that lens on that. And again, apologies if this is a little redundant, but I think it's good to have it publicly out there. Got to zoom up just one. So, under goals, objectives, and action plans, public facilities and infrastructure, under page 19, goal three, objective, adding the bullet point, continuing to monitor the environmental impact of our stormwater system on Rock Creek and our surroundings. So we did have the green team and some of the folks in the school do some studies, since we now have a very effective stormwater system, it's also bringing in substantially more water into the creek.
Untreated.
Untreated water, exactly, so we want to make sure that we are keeping an eye on that and monitoring it, to make sure that there's no negative impact that comes from that as well. Housing, so this is under the housing section, we're into more of the contextual areas, we just had a couple of edits. So before it read, under Red Lodge housing units, read an "an" 3% increase, just a quick grammar edit to make it "a" 3% increase. Another edit was specific to the community foundation's request to put in the accurate date, so Red Lodge Area Community Foundation completed a Carbon County Housing Needs Assessment in 2016. We originally had the wrong date. One second.
Water, right?
Water, water. Land use, so there was discussion about the community entrances. One was just a quick edit, it had said commercial entrance zoning, where it's actually community entrance zoning, so we're editing that. And then we also had a little bit broader conversation about our light industrial versus artisan manufacturing, and realistically, and I'll just kind of go through the explanation first and then read it. The way it read before sounded as though we would not permit industrial use in our community, community entrances specifically, which is not the council's intent. The community entrances should have standards for those new developments to maintain an attractive and cohesive area, but not necessarily limit the type of business that is permitted within these zones. We also feel that there should be clear definitions of the different types of businesses if they are expected to follow different standards. So within that, the city should review zoning code, the zoning code, and possibly amend the zoning to ensure that there are mitigation measures in place, such as required landscaping and buffer yards, increased setbacks, et cetera, to improve our entrances and to make them more attractive. There should be clear definitions included in our zoning code for different manufacturing uses, such as light industrial or artisan manufacturing, the principal uses, and that's what's still there, so I could have actually probably deleted that, but, okay, moving along, we're getting through it, guys. Public facilities and infrastructure, so underwater system additional needs, and Mike, I'm so grateful you are here right now, we just wanted to have some language about the 16-inch bypass that has, how it has been approved, and it's in process of installation to increase water flow to the Red Lodge Country Club of States. I would just love it if you would look at that language real quick, and let me know if that looks good.
Looks good.
Awesome. Then on to just another quick edit, converting the existing 12-inch forest main into a gravity fed system, or a gravity system, it read "in ton" before, so just trying to catch all the little things. Under recreational resources, we had moved to remove the Whistler Observatory from that section, removing the section of the observatory as one, it's already included within our public park section above, and the recreational area where it seems more appropriate. The observatory is also managed by a private group versus something like our city pool, which is managed by the city staff, so we felt that it didn't seem appropriate to focus on something that's kind of outside of our scope and control, and more appropriate to focus on all of our MOUs and the partnerships that we have. that we have with everybody within our community. So, because again, that's how the Whistler Observatory is, is it's a MOU with a private organization, the same way that we have one with the soccer fields, disc golf, the garden clubs, alliance club, many different organizations. So, instead, we decided to add a paragraph that just says, "The City of Red Lodge partners with many organizations to continue to improve our public parks. Through memorandums of understanding, the city establishes agreements with community organizations for their specific uses of the parks, and they contribute to development, maintenance, awareness, and improvement to best serve not just the organizations, but the public at large. The cooperative efforts of City Public Works Department, the Parks Board, the City Council, and the MOU partnerships, um, the city parks remained, or remain invaluable asset to the community." I think I meant to say "through the cooperative." Give me one second, quick edit. "Through the cooperative efforts of the City Public Works Department." We figure we could then move the photo from the Whistler Observatory to this area, as that is a good definition of one of our MOUs. That are my, those are my edits. We do also have some additions from Jody.
Let, this is the motion we've got on the table now, so let's focus on this one.
Okay.
Currently. Thank you, Councilmember Tupin, for that, very thorough on that, and hopefully, we've got them available for the public to see that. This is one of those that has been a collaborative and developing effort over the last couple of weeks and through the meetings today, so thank you for that. Having been party and hearing some of those concerns that were there, I will add that our vice chair from the planning meeting was there in those discussions today. We've got our chair online as well. I will add that if I were to kind of summarize, one of the things that I saw that was a trigger in here, if, if the growth policy said, "Make a plan," council was pretty okay with it. The concern was when the growth policy said, "Make a plan that dictates X," without having gone to the council and, and having that. So, I think that's where, that's kind of something that I see that, that envelops kind of a lot of those conversations, as well as some of them that'll come up later. That was just kind of the, the observation that I made. It was okay to say, "Make a plan," but don't tell us what's in it. We'll, we'll get there when we get there.
Part of figuring out what you wanted in.
So, any discussion at the table on any of those changes included in this motion to amend?
I, I would just like to say thank you, because you did incorporate everything that I had. My major concerns about the three things that extra that I've just found this afternoon aren't nearly as important as what I was concerned about with, with this, so, thank you.
Well, I'm, big thank you for everybody for providing input. That makes this part a lot easier, and thank you to Planning Board for putting together a fabulous document, and the fact that we were able to come together and actually, again, I feel like it was a very cooperative process.
Okay, so, any other further comment at the table? What I'm going to do, because of the nature and the bulk of this, if we're done at the table, I'm going to go to public comment on these edits and additions, but one last look at the table. All right, hearing none, I'm going to go ahead and open to public comment, and as we open to public comment, I will first look to our vice chair, who is here in the discussions today, and, and our chair online, and then we'll open it up to, to anyone else also who'd like to speak.
Well, I'm Jeff DiBenedetto, Vice Chair of Carbon, of the Planning Board, and I also live at 317 South Hagan. And I, I concur with what was said, that I think these proposed amendments have, you know, helped clarify some sections within the growth policy. They're constructive edits, as, as far as I, I can see. And I just want to reiterate that to keep in mind, this is not a regulatory document or, nor is it specifying zoning. What it is, is a guiding document that leads us to other implementing kinds of documents in the process. So, it's, it's, it's a plan that is supposed to kind of outline the goals and vision, and visions for the community over the next five to ten, ten years. It's reviewed every five years to, to see if there's any needed updates, but it's, it's really geared to be an outward looking plan, so, um, those, those are my comments.
Thank you, Jeff. All right, Al, did you want to add anything, sir, before I open it up to the general public?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I echo what Jeff said, and I want to compliment the council on their diligent review. It's an eighty-eight page document. We spent fourteen months on it. I think the corrections and the additions are, make it better, and I also want to reach out to WWC and our consultant planner, who was a big part of putting this all together, but thank you all.
Thank you. All right, with that, I will open it up, but it's still, we're open on public comment, specifically on the motion to include the edits presented. I'll look to the room first. Seeing nothing, I'll go online if there's any additional conversation. I am not seeing any cameras. I am not seeing any hands waved, and I'm not seeing any mutes, so I'm going to count that going once, twice, and three times. We will bring it back to the table. Any further discussion on these amendments? All right, hearing none, just to clarify the motion, the motion is to amend the main motion with the following amendments. Can I get a roll call vote, please?
So, could you tell if you...
I wasn't here. You had me.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I don't know who made the motion.
Chelsea made the motion.
Second to...
Did we make motion on the amendment?
Yeah, so, so the main motion was, who was, who was the main motion?
Chelsea.
I did the main motion. I don't know if we did a motion to amend.
Shall we?
I, I moved to accept the amendment as presented by Chelsea.
I'll second that.
All right, so we have a motion from, we'll, we'll go back and make it official there.
Okay.
You were gone, Lonnie, it all fell apart.
I was, yeah.
Well, I didn't know it was made the way he talked, so I got the main motion, so now there's a new motion.
To accept the amendment.
A motion to amend as presented.
Who seconded it?
I did.
Okay.
Now, we'll have a mo, we'll have a vote on the motion to amend thus far.
Yes, thank you.
Lonnie?
Yeah.
Daniel?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Ronny?
Yes.
Rude?
Yes.
Six oh, motion to amend passes. Are there any other further motions to amend?
Yes, I moved to amend the following changes, um, starting on page twenty. Goal number six, pursue climate and energy efficiency in the city. Under action, it says, "Create a climate action plan. Responsibility, City Council." I would like this to change to read, "Consider environment," to scratch that part and change it to say, "Consider environmental impacts when making city decisions." And, um, that kind of goes along with the same thing, not actually kind of what we've talked about.
Go ahead and reduce all of them.
Okay, all of them, okay. And then, on page twenty-one, goal number four, um, when it talks about defensible space, we don't currently have a defensible space ordinance in town, um, so I would like to change that to work with local resources, including Red Lodge Fire, to educate citizens on fire safety, including defensible spaces, since we have no ordinance. And then, on page twenty-two, goal number six, change objective, um, change consider, increasing the setback requ, regulations from all streams and riparian areas, um, change that to read, "Consider Fish Wildlife, um, FWP recommended policies to conserve fisheries, conserve fisheries and riparian habitat."
Can you expand on what your concern was with the...
Um, well, their, their guidelines were, I printed it out, it's in there, um...
Well, one says, "Increasing the setback."
Right, well, the setbacks that the Fish Wildlife and Parks, if you do what they recommend, it's a hundred feet setback from the edge of all rivers, streams, and lakes. So, if you have a lot in town on Rock Creek and you give them a hundred foot setback, it's now an unbuildable lot.
Right.
So, all I'm saying, rather than change, having it actually spell out, you're going to change the setback to follow this, we're just going to consider their recommendations, because all of those recommendations are on page seventy-three, and if we change those setbacks, we're in essence making people's land unbuildable.
And that would have impacted like the entire island of Rock Creek almost?
It would, yes.
Both sides.
Yes, yes.
So, there are those threes. Discussion at the table or questions on those? Make, make Councilmember Ronny defender position, I'm okay with that.
I'll ask the question, well, Jody, have you passed this by Jeff or Al and Chelsea? Or, I mean, who's consulted with you on this?
We were, we were just, we, well, Patty and I consulted together, but it was just, um...
Late edition.
Late edition, yeah, this afternoon. After we got Chelsea's, Dave, Mayor Dave, said, "Are there any other changes?" And I says, "I don't know, let me just briefly go through and see," so.
So, that, that's why we're deducting them as two batches for that clarity.
Yes.
So, this really hasn't been vetted? These are just ideas you had this afternoon, and, but it hasn't been vetted?
Well, that's what we're doing now.
That's what we're doing now, yes, yes.
And, and we will go for public comment on that, too.
Eleven power, so I...
Other, other comments at the table?
Um, I'm just looking for a little context, um, so bear with me here for a second. I just want to see if there's, I might have a, a slight addition to your first one on page...
Twenty?
Yeah, sorry.
No, feel free, please. I, I mean, I was, these are up for discussion. I'm not saying, you know, at all, so.
The goal sixteen? Goal six, okay.
It's six, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
I was in a hurry typing this, because I literally had like an hour to do this and then get to my next meeting, so.
So, the only thing I would recommend for...
On page twenty?
This, instead of change from create a climate action plan to, um, in consideration of the Red Lodge or the adopted, the City of Red Lodge adopted energy conservation plan and sustainability plan, consider environmental impacts when making city decisions.
So, an insert in front of that?
Yeah, I just think, again, we have those in place, and I think those are great to refer to, um, and...
That's perfect.
I'd like to include those.
Is there, is there a way we can include that as part of the original motion?
Yes, yes, absolutely.
And then, on goal six for page twenty-two, um, and again, I'm just going to go for a little bit of reference here, just make sure I'm not repeating myself more than I say. Um, let's see, sorry, bear with me though. Uh, I did not get a chance to review these when you sent them.
I know, I just sent them over, but I, I banned.
But I wasn't able to shower, so that was good.
Yes.
Let's see, so, consider increasing the setback regulations. So, I honestly think it feels less restrictive the way it's originally written versus considering Fish Wildlife and Parks recommended, recommended policies.
So, the, so the action as it says right now...
It says goal six, um...
Is it the action or is it the objective?
The objective.
It's in the objectives, um, where it says, um, "Consider increasing setback reg, regulations from all streams and riparian areas."
No, there was, there was one you pointed out earlier. No, that's exactly what she's referring to.
Yeah, that's right there, yes. But it's in regards to their, their recommendations for the setbacks, or a hundred foot setback.
Well, that's why... But that says, "Consider," I think was the point.
Yeah, what I, what I'm saying is, when I read, change consider or, "Consider increasing the setback regulations for all streams and riparian areas," to changing it to consider Fish Wildlife and Parks recommended policies to conserve fisheries, or fisheries and riparian habitats, I feel like that could get a lot more restrictive.
Okay, I'm fine with not doing that one.
But, yeah, that, that would be my only thought process on that, and, um, but again, that's, that's all I have, is I feel like the number two feels more restrictive, and I, that's where I tend to push back.
What if we just took out increasing and just kept it as, "Consider the setback regulations from all streams and riparian areas?" I like that.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Okay, okay, perfect.
And then, instead of from four, okay, make up my notes.
From, okay, so are you making these notes?
Yes, I'm making these notes.
Okay, okay, so, and are, are, is everybody good with the number two, the goal four, take from defensible space?
Defensible space, yeah.
Yeah, okay. No, that sounds great, okay.
So, other discussions at the table before we go to public comment?
Yes, no, someone's waving.
Okay.
All right.
I was waving.
Okay, all right, Councilmember Davis, did you have discussion before we go to public comment?
No, thank you.
All right, so, at this point, I'm going to go to public comment, and I'm going to start with those in the room, specifically our Planning Board Vice Chair, and then, in following the same format I did, uh, did you want to speak, Jeff?
Well, I'll just, I guess I'll just state that regarding the setbacks, I think as it was originally worded, it was much more open and, and, uh, and less, less restrictive. So, that's, and I didn't really catch the other two changes that were recommended.
Okay.
And I've understood that the concern was, what we didn't want to do is say, "You will create a regulation that sets setbacks at one hundred feet."
Right, and that, that was what, I was, that was my intent, and so, I'm perfectly fine just with this, with change that we, we made.
Okay. Al?
Yeah, I'm page twenty-two. I think you're there, but I'm not sure. I would just change the word "increasing" to "reviewing."
Yep, yep.
Consider reviewing the setback regulations from streams.
Okay.
Got it, Al, that's cool.
Oh, that's even better than just writing "increasing."
I like that.
And the other one on page twenty, I, I don't think I understood exactly what you did there.
We, the, the current thing said, "Create a climate action plan," and that felt a little overwhelming from the corner of the world we call Red Lodge.
Yeah.
And so, the, the goal with the change had to basically say, "Consider environmental impacts whenever we're making city decisions." So, if we're talking about trash, or we're talking about power, we're talking about anything else, is make that part of our discussion change.
Are you making that under objective or where?
Action. It's a goal.
Is it on page...
Page twenty.
Twenty.
Twenty. Is it an action that you're editing?
Yes.
Yes.
So, it's an action.
We're striking the action, "Create a climate action plan," and then, we are adding, um, Chelsea had, replacing it. Chelsea had the exact language.
Yeah, um...
Okay, and, and the other change that you suggested on page twenty-one, uh, seemed fine to me, uh, rather than using the word enforcing, you were going to use the word, what were we going to replace that with?
Um...
Work to educate, whereas there is nothing to enforce at this point.
We don't have an ordinance regarding defensible space around people's...
Right, so, how did you, what did you replace the word enforcing with?
Work with, yeah, educate. Work with local resources, including Red Lodge Fire, to educate citizens on fire safety, including defensible spaces.
Including, okay, all right, very good. I'm okay with that, thank you.
Okay.
All right, now, let's go back to the room. This is still public comment on the motion to include the last three amendments, edits. Nothing in the room? Any other hands online? Going once, twice, three times, we'll include that public comment. I will bring it back to the table, discussion at the table.
Okay.
Okay, did that address some of your concerns?
Yeah.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Hearing no other discussion at the table, let's get a vote on the motion to amend the second set.
Lonnie?
Yeah.
Daniel?
Yes.
Davis?
Yep.
Ronny?
Yes.
Rude?
Yes.
Stupin?
Yes.
Six oh, that motion passes. Back to the main motion to adopt the growth policy. That was Chelsea who made that initial, can you just restate the, the resolution heading just to refresh our memory?
Hold on, I moved to...
Just, just the resolution will be fine.
Resolution number thirty-seven oh four, a resolution to adopt the 2025 Red Lodge growth policy update.
All right.
I think, yeah, add the word as amended, as amended.
As amended.
Yeah, we've, we've had those two motions now to, to amend it.
Yep.
Is there any other discussion on the main motion at the table? All right, just to keep it official, I'm going to open up public comment on the whole main motion growth policy overall. I'm looking to the room. Nobody leaping to their feet in the room? Let's go to online. Mr. Blumer, you have the floor for three minutes.
Does the motion read as, to approve as amended, or is it just a move to approve?
Well, it was, it was a move to approve, but it has since been amended twice.
Okay, I just wondered for clarification if you should include the word "move is amended," but that's a...
Noted.
That's up to you.
All right, looking for public input, going once, twice, three times? Can I get a roll call on the main motion to approve as amended the growth policy?
Conley?
Yeah.
Daniel?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Ruth?
Yes.
Steven?
Yes.
Six zero, the motion passes, and I would just like to add, again, my, my, my thanks and gratitude, uh, to the planning board, um, and that includes a, a couple of folks that have cycled through that aren't on there anymore, as Al mentioned, it was a, it was a lengthy process. A, a huge shout out to, um, the planning firm that we use that, that came in to help us with that, and a huge shout out to council. I, I can say with a fairly high level of confidence that, uh, this is the best council has ever reviewed a growth policy and I, I think it is beneficial and, uh, in the public's best interest that we've done so, so thank you very, very much. Some, sometimes, uh, the public process takes a little bit of time and a little bit of effort and a little bit of eleventh hour changes, so thank you all. All right, I will entertain a most, I'm sorry, Mr. Blumer, my head?
I'm assuming now the amended, uh, document will, or the amendment will be forwarded to WWC and a new report will be written to include those amendments and then.
That is correct, that is on my, that is on my action.
The final report then will be posted on, online and shared with the planning board.
That would be a correct assumption.
Thank you, thanks again.
All right, thank you, all right, I will entertain a motion for resolution number three-seven oh eight.
I move to approve resolution number three-seven oh eight, a resolution of the Red Lodge City Council to set fees for the Red Lodge City Pool beginning in twenty-twenty-five.
I would second that.
Motion from Councilmember Ronnie, second from Councilmember.
Conley.
Conley, discussion at the table.
So there is only one change in the fees and that is on group swimming lessons. They were ninety dollars and they've increased to a hundred dollars, um, but at the same time, they also increase the time for those group lessons from forty minutes to forty-five minutes.
And they did not understand that those rates are set by council and so it was already in place. And again, we have a very helpful public that reaches out to let us know, uh, whenever we're doing something outside of policy and so this is our effort to step in and correct that quickly. Any other discussion at the table? Hearing none, we'll go to public comment, this is public comment specific to setting pool fees resolution. Looking to the room, seeing no action, I'm looking to online. Going once, twice, three times, we'll close the public action, or the public comment on that and bring it back to the table. Last call for comment at the table. May I get a vote, please?
Conley?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Ruth?
Yes.
Steven?
Yes.
Six oh, motion passes. I will entertain a motion to award the bid for the Rocky Fork demolition.
I move to approve resolution number thirty-seven oh nine, resolution to award the demolition of the Rocky Fork Inn project for the City of Red Lodge, Montana.
All right, so this.
I second.
Oh, I'm sorry, this is a motion from Councilmember Conley, a second from Councilmember Ronnie. Um, note that you have, um, and did we make this available, a couple of copies, okay? So this is a document that was included in the packet with some fill in the blanks, as it has been for a couple of meetings now. Um, the bid opening was today, we received two bid openings, um, they are referenced in the, in the letter, um, to, to recommend awarding the bid, there's quite a discrepancy between those two bids. Um, there was also several people who had initially expressed an interest, um, but it turns out when there are national disasters heading out across the country, a lot of those guys chase those disasters because they pay a lot better in the moment and so I anticipate, I think that there was probably some bidders that were interested that chased the big money instead and so they're in Texas and Louisiana and, and other places there. So, um, other discussion at the table?
I just have a question about, uh, I was, I'm assuming their shovel ready, ready to go tomorrow morning, right?
That, they are, but they don't get to, there is still a flood plain permit that is involved in this process that we are working through.
Okay.
So we are, we are going to work it as close to yesterday as possible, but we're also going to dot every I and cross every T.
And no, no clue when that might be?
I can tell you that as we've talked about it, we're shooting for before July is done. So however, that flood permit goes to DEQ for review, so, so we're not done with bureaucracy quite yet, but we will make it happen as quickly as is possible. From a contract, they've got to get started, we've, we've, they've got to be going within sixty days, um, I think is our, is our RFP process on that, so.
If, if it's not done, do we start over again?
No, I don't think so, my goal is to get this done as quickly as possible, so.
Get my cards.
Other discussion at the table?
Big difference between the bidding.
It's huge.
So, yeah, um, this is one of those that is required babysitting, I, I know when I reached out to Tetsu Tech, my understanding is, asked it this morning, they have not received any actual bids and so they sent out an email blast to everybody and said, today is the deadline, and then they got a couple of responses back.
Okay.
So, this is, this is one of those projects and, and to Councilmember Ruth's point, this is one of those projects that has required continued monitoring and handholding and I anticipate that will continue and until the day we go lay down on an empty field with grass seed and go, ah. Further discussion at the table before we go to public comment? All right, I'm going to go ahead and open public comment for resolution number three-seven oh nine, resolution to award the demolition of Rocky Fork, looking to the room.
Just a couple of questions if I could, Sean Patrick Bryant, Seventeen Palm Park, um, this is great and it's been all been waiting for. Is it, could you describe what's included in the demolition, is it leveling it, is it, is it just taking the structure away? That's one question, and is the area just Rocky Fork Inn? No other adjoining properties, that's a different project?
Okay.
Good question.
So I'll, I'll bring those back to table, thank you. Any other comments from the room? Hearing none, I'll go to online, any questions from online specific to three-seven oh nine? Hearing none, we'll bring discussion back to the table, um, I will add a little bit of, of detail. Um, this is demolition, which is basically getting it down to ground level, natural state and reseeding. It works in conjunction with a, a separate action, which is the, let me think of the word, um, mitigation, which has to do with asbestos and a couple of items there, so those two things will be happening. There is yet a third part of this project that is not included here, which is the bank reconstruction. So this is not the bank reconstruction, this is the leveling, the demolition and the seeding to get it to an empty field. As far as the area, this is only the Rocky Fork area, there is a separate conversation, um, as folks are aware, that we are looking at a similar process for the Eagle's Nest, but that will, this, this is specifically to the Rocky Fork area. Councilmember Tupin, did you have a question or a comment?
No.
Okay, other comments or questions at the table? Hearing none, may I get a vote?
Conley?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Ruth?
Yes.
Steven?
Yes.
Six zero, the motion passes and we enter a way closer to that finish line that we are all looking forward to. Uh, I will entertain a motion for the mayor to sign the airport grant.
I move to approve the mayor to sign the airport grant.
I will second.
Motion from Councilmember Ronnie, second from Councilmember, um, Daniels. Um, so this is a grant that was actually awarded to the Joint Airport Board, which we are in with the county, but because it is city-owned land and they are basically doing improvements on city-owned land, as a sponsor, um, as a sponsor, they require the signature of the mayor, there is no cost dollars involved, uh, from the city, this is a grant that was received from the state AIP dollars, um, but be, be, because of, of the nature of, of the grant, it requires a signature from council, or a signature of the mayor and also of legal council and I'm covering the bases by making sure we have council's blessing to move forward with that.
I have a question.
Yes.
Uh, are we just signees, are we, are we responsible for any defaults or we're just signees?
We are, we are just saying, yes, it's okay to put your stuff on our land.
Like Angela would be managing it.
So, yeah, and, and, and so there will be a commissioner that signs it.
Okay.
And they will do a similar process to what we're doing at the commissioner meetings and they will sign off as well. Other questions at the table? All right, um, I'm going to go ahead and open for public discussion, um, this is specifically to accepting the money from the state to pave everything except the runway up there is basically what this does. We'll open that public comment. Seeing no action in the room, I'll look to online. Is, Mike Maples isn't waving his hand, that's just our cursor down there at the. Going once, twice, three times, we'll go ahead and close the public comment, last chance for discussion at the table. Hearing none, may I get a roll call vote, please?
Conley?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Ruth?
Yes.
Steven?
Yes.
Six zero, the motion passes, thank you. That concludes the business portion of our meeting, right on schedule, way to go, guys. Um, now what we do for the public's opinion, for the public's wellbeing, uh, the second part of a meeting is a work meeting for the council where they are reviewing things that are coming up on future, on future agendas, um, as things get closer, um, so with that, and I just flipped my resolutions over, so, or my, my agendas, uh, we'll start with public health and safety, which is Council Chair Conley, I believe, even though I don't have my notes in front of me.
Yes.
Will you please give us a very brief summary of what the full council needs to know from the meeting this morning?
Um, the chief gave us a, a, a counting from July first to four AM on the fifth, had eighty-nine calls for service, uh, a missing eight-year-old, eight firework complaints. Other than that, there were traffic and all the usual, so that's pretty low. Also, we discussed the solid waste ordinance and we think that we've got it narrowed down to do a draft. That, we also had a group at discussion on, on people running the stop sign at Fifth and Hauser and, um, I think that the mayor's been addressing that through Public Works.
Right, thank you. Any questions for public health and safety from the rest of council? All right, moving on to admin and finance and for that we will look to, uh, Committee Chair Conley.
Nope.
No, it's not, Committee Chair.
Ronnie.
Ronnie, I'm Ronnie, I looked at Ronnie, but I said Conley, sorry, that's what I was going to have my keynotes in front of me.
I will, um, defer to, um, we're going to do our first budget presentation from, um, our Public Works Director, Mike Maples, so I will let him go ahead and, and do his presentation.
All right, I, I will add, as we were looking at department heads, um, Public Works is a very significant part of our budget and so in speaking with Chief Schrock, we will revisit that as we get a little bit closer, so he will be on a separate meeting in the future. Mike, you have the floor, sir. You have three minutes, no.
I can do it in three minutes. Basically, what I'm going to present is our preliminary budget that Public Works is proposing for next, for the coming year. Basically, the same presentation I gave last year, so I'm going to just go through the, the informational slides about the department really fast, I'm just going to get to where we're at, looking at last year's budget, what we're proposing for this year's budget and when we're going through those, I encourage you if you have questions about individual items, I have yesterday's version of the budget, which is not.
Different than today.
It's different than today, but I can answer some questions, so, um, basically, we're going to go through water, sewer, parks, solid waste and pool, um, but I'm going to skip all these and just give to, can you guys read that?
Can you go into presentation mode so that we're, F five should do it? If I remember windows.
Let me see here, give me one second, slide show.
Or view, yeah.
Take view.
There we go.
There we go, very nice.
A little bigger. Um, so in twenty-twenty, last year we had a budget of two point nine for water, um, and this year, we're going to, we're proposing a budget of three point two-six-nine, um, and in that budget so far, um, the big ticket items are one hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars in salaries, um, water and sewer pickup salaries for almost everybody in the city.
Portions of.
Portions of. We have three hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year in debt that we pay out of water, um, we, we're going to continue, it's been kind of a standard in water and sewer, a budget heavy in engineering, um, it's proved very valuable in the past, uh, we have three hundred thousand, uh, set aside in there, I think in twenty-twenty-four, we use around one forty of that, so. It's, it's over budgeted, but it's, it's not a bad place to be over budgeted. We do have in there, um, in this budget, uh, one point eight-six for the bypass project. Some of that is impact fee, some of it will be the loan and the loan does, uh, it, it does have fifty percent forgiveness. So we only have to pay back half the money we borrowed, the rest is basically a grant, they call it loan forgiveness. In the budget, we're including a, a line item that's going to split a dump truck that will be used for water, sewer and stormwater digs, it'll also be used to haul snow, um, used dump truck and then, uh, some money to, to go towards re, overhauling our SCADA system. Uh, we also have in there a split with sewer to fund the ground going equipment so that, um, so that when we need it in the winter, we don't have to bed borrow or rent ones when they're not available.
Mike, before you move on, for those of us who don't speak Public Works acronyms, would you clarify the SCADA system?
Supervisory Control and Data Acquisition. It's a fancy way to say that's what basically allows everything to talk, so like when the tank gets low.
The water tank?
It, yeah, the water tank, then it tells the PRB to open, which then tells the pumps to run. It, it, that's the control part of it and then the other part of it is, um, and we have it on water, sewer, lift stations, um, how everything integrates and it also is how we get alarms, so that if something goes wrong, that's the mechanism that notifies us and it also gives us control so that if we're not right there, we can control these systems from a device. Is that clear enough?
Yes, thank you, yeah, I only, I only counted two acronyms as you were explaining the acronym, so we're good.
The ground going equipment, um, is split with, with wa, with sewer, um, budget, um, the reserve is an approximate number around seven hundred thousand, um, and four hundred and ten in depreciation, I don't know what the includes down there is, I think that was a leftover, um, so three point two-six-nine in water, um, oops, went too far. Wastewater budget, uh, twenty twenty-four, twenty-five, we're three point six roughly, um, we bumped it up a little bit, there's, this year a three point seven. Um, again, the big ticket items, this one is a little more salary than water, um, we have loans we're paying on, um, we are doing wastewater phase one and two A this year, so that's budgeted, um, of that one point four, six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars is grant money, the rest is coming out of our, of our enterprise fund. Same thing, engineering, same as water, um, potential sewer project with the leftover from last year, it's not budgeted this year at this point, um, forgot to delete that, um, we are budgeting for some backup pumps for the lift stations, um, since COVID, based on what I've been told. Since COVID, based on what I've been told, because I've only been here a year and a half, we've seen a lot of growth up on the bench, and both fires and the whole golf course, they're, they're all on with stations. And they, whereas fires didn't used to run that much, now it runs a lot. I want to give pumps, they have on shelves for when they go down, because we don't have a lot of time when they do. And then there's the split for the volume machine. Reserves in sewer are quite high, and we're hoping to transfer some money that was spent some years ago on the horse main. And that project was identified in our impact fee study, that was paid for out of reserves. And speaking with the.
Auditors.
Auditors, we can go take that money from impact fees, because on impact fees, it can only be spent on what the impact fee set. But right now, we already spent that money, we're going to pay it back to ourselves, and the reserves will probably go up with that. We're budgeting for the SCADA, mostly out of wastewater. I've worked, I've got, I, I hired a firm to come in and basically do a preliminary engineering report on our SCADA system so that we can wrap our head around what it actually needs. The one is done by June, it'll probably be done mid-July, and that will have a cost estimate. That hundred thousand dollars is a guess, but by July, mid, by the end of the month, we should have a real number for that.
I, I will add that from a city planning perspective, when you look at our capacities and the brick walls we're going to run into, this is the one we're going to encounter first as far as capacity on the city service.
That's why getting the reserves up is, is good. And so that one's wastewater.
And that proposed budget was twenty twenty-five, twenty-six?
Yeah, that'll be an edit just down at the bottom, it says, it says twenty-four, twenty-five at the bottom, that'll be another edit on that page.
So.
I, I did this today while I was doing a bunch of other things.
Mike, can, can I just ask you a quick question? I, I don't ever remember seeing depreciation in our budget.
What?
Is, is there? Okay.
Yeah.
Where, is it when we're actually budgeting dollar amounts?
Yeah, depreciation is in there.
Is it? Okay.
But the auditors, when they do go, they're in adjustments and stuff, they're the ones that calculate the.
The depreciation, that's why we don't normally see it, okay.
And, and I think so, there's, there's another comment there that's good, so when we talk about the money that we take in, we all think of real dollars, we think about, we think about property taxes, we think about resort taxes. But you will see in here, you'll see depreciation, you will see loans, you'll see that, that loan we're getting with half of it back, you know, if, basically, everything has to be tracked and referenced in there all the way through, so, yeah.
And I did have a question on what percent increase in salaries?
I think we have three, did we?
I think two, two point nine, it's driven by the state CPI, and that's what, what we've got edited into our, our contracts across all of our public positions.
I'm going to jump to stormwater, this one is a work in progress. Last year's budget was four point five, mostly because we did phase two and three of the stormwater project. We, we pulled money out of stormwater for the EDA match, we're rolling that forward, that's what the EDA project is. The EDA sidewalks, when we do the EDA project, we're going to include sidewalks on Second Street, for this, from the zip trip up to existing sidewalks, we'll be sidewalk to the school, and we're going to put in curb and gutter on that street and new pavement. I don't believe that part was in the EDA grants, it just covered where the stormwater went. So we need some extra money to come up with that part in order to do that, raise a hundred thousand, proposing to use a hundred thousand dollars out of stormwater from the one percent resort tax to cover half of it, and I'm proposing that resort tax pick up the other hundred to cover the sidewalks, and that will get us, we're still finalizing the budget on that project, but I think that'll give us good enough coverage, ten percent for contingency.
And, and I would add that those of you who are able to make it to that meeting at five o'clock on the seventeenth, that will be a whole big dive into, to all of the details related to this project, so.
I put this in here today, this is basically like, we have, it came out because we were looking up the upper, on the north end of Grant. All the stormwater just drains straight east and goes right into people's houses. And so we were looking at a project to tear that road up, redo the asphalt, and mitigate that problem. It is a stormwater issue, and I, and, and I'd like to have a budget line out of stormwater that we could use for projects like that. I mean, for that particular project with us two ourselves and working with a subcontractor, we're looking at like probably thirty thousand miller to do the whole block, so it's, it's cost effective. But I need a budget to do it out of, so that's what this line came from. The stormline on Fourteenth, that's a possible project we have. We talked about last year with the mine drain, the idea that that in the beginning was that if we did the design, then they would pay to extend the stormwater up to the drain, up, up towards the mine drain so they wouldn't have to bring it as far. After everything got said and done, the department abandoned mines, came back and said, oh, we can't do that, we can't pay for that. And I said, well, at that time, I was like, well, we got to get from A to B, and it's your mine drain, so you bring it to us. While the meantime, there's been development up there, and this year, for whatever reason, the hill is running way more water out of it. And we've got water going into, historically, it did this, it was funneled into a sewer drain up there. And with the new development up there, it's, it's came back online. So this would address that situation, and it would, it would help the mine drain.
This is, we'll come get it? We'll, we'll make this fine, you have to bring it to closer.
This is Fourteenth, and where's the mine drain?
Right behind two twenty-one, Grant happening south.
And the very, very north end of Grant.
That's the water feature we talked about last year.
So it's the east end of Fourteenth.
West end.
West, it's up on the hill, yeah.
The west end, okay.
It's at the very start of Grant, at the top.
Okay.
And I can put a number in there for the MGT storm drains. We, we put together some light engineering on it and a cost estimate which smid that is DOT. They're, it feels like they're, they're going to do something about it, but right now, what they're trying, what they're, what they're wanting from us is an analysis to show how much of the water that goes in those drains comes up abroadway and how much comes from up above. And I get a feeling what their strategy is, is they're going to say, well, X percent is our water, X perc, Y percent is your water, so you guys need to pay Y percent to get this done. So I threw in some money just in case that happens to budget for it, so that we have the latitude to, to do it. Currently, to tie in all those storm drains is about a million bucks. So if we, I mean, we have to get it done, if, if we have to throw two hundred at it, and they throw eight, it's still a good deal.
And, and just to emphasize that the, the hard wall we're going to run into in this town is wastewater. So what we're doing with the stormwater is getting it so that it's not contributing to wastewater. It's, it's separate and handled differently than, than wastewater.
So just a quick question, will a lot of those type of be able to come out of that one percent? Will the one percent be able to help pay for, for some of that?
I believe all of it.
All of it? Okay, that's great, the one percent resort tax, okay.
So that's stormwater.
Perfect.
Streets, blah, 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 oops.
Streets, blah, blah, blah.
That's a good way to describe it.
So streets has basically two budgets, if you will, we have resort tax and gas tax. So I broke them apart, the big ticket items. Resort tax issue that we're proposing, the cheddar is a carryover, that was approved last year. I don't think we got the budget finalized until August, sometimes I didn't order the truck until the budget was approved, and it takes a year to build the truck, so I think I got it yet, so that's a carryover. The dump truck, midi loader, that is part of the, the shared split with water and sewer for a dump truck. And in, in the street's perspective, it would be used to haul snow in the winter. The midi loader is a smaller loader, I'm just trying to think ahead, been a lot of talk about annexing.
Remington?
Areas that we provide sewer to right now. If we do that, we'll have to plow snow, and basically, it would allow us to use one of our big directional loader plows up there and take it off the alleys in downtown and use the smaller loader in the alleys. We have in there a sidewalk cost share program, that. In the town I worked in previously, we had a sidewalk cost share program that was funded by SID. Basically, money went into this pot, and people could come in and say, I'm going to redo my sidewalk, and I got a bid for eight thousand dollars, and I want to apply for the cost share program. And it was first come, first served, and the cost share program gave me four thousand bucks. So it paid for half the sidewalk. Really good program, it gives people incentive to fix their sidewalks, makes it easier to do. We're proposing to take fifty thousand on resort tax to put into that fund and just see if it works. They would be available to businesses, I think here, you know, we'd have to work through some details. There would probably, there we didn't have a cap on it, here I think we'd have to have a cap so that somebody had a really expensive sidewalk, we don't spend all the money in one spot. And salaries, the gas tax, big ticket items were a carryover for the EDA match, and that, and then that. Can you explain what that one is?
So on the EDA match, that one won't be in there, that's not a carryover, it's put that match, because the council approved it to create that fund.
It went in the footbarn area.
So that's gone, that's moved over into that, that fund that council created, so that one won't be in there. But the, the salaries, of course, are, so that, that proposed one is a lot less than the five point three.
So, yeah, so that budget's got a little work left.
Question for you, Mike, real quick, on the, the sidewalk program, because I think that's awesome.
Yeah.
Is that going to be limited to pre-existing sidewalks or new development, or?
I, I kind of, I don't know, and that's part of, when we put it together, there were discussions that we'd have to have. I, I, I don't, I don't, I guess it's up to you guys and, you know.
The EDA will be a good discussion for that too, because there's, there's some, several sidewalks there. I can, I can tell you right now, having, having done this for a year and plus already, we're not doing sidewalks everywhere that the EDA road curb and gutter is going in. And so the fact that we're putting it in some places, and Mike has done a very studious job of determining corners and edge pieces, where it makes sense for the city to come in and do that, but as soon as we do that, we're going to have some people say, well, they happen to live on the road that goes to the high school, they got a sidewalk, how come I don't? And so this is, and so as we look at this, it's kind of what do we want that plan to look like?
And that would be the same question is safe routes to school, for instance, on Fourteenth and Broadway, we have a school crossing, but on neither side, on the east side, are there sidewalks. Whether the, the homeowners or the business owner, they're not going to foot the sidewalk because they don't have the interest, but the city has an interest in making that a safer route to school.
And, and the trick is, the trick in that is the scalability, so, right, if you think about the three tenants we try to do from a city or a service organization, we get things done in a scalable way, we can do it the same today, tomorrow, and, and next year. We have to be able to say, the city's going to pay for a larger portion of these sidewalks because it's a safer route to school, or. So those are conversations that have to be had, that doesn't mean they can't be had, it's just their conversations have to be had before we move down those areas.
Any other street questions? Solid waste budget, we're, well, twenty twenty-four, we're at six hundred and seventy-eight. Six ninety-six is kind of what we're predicting for this year. I believe it's going to be higher than that, because I don't, I haven't got through the recycling budget yet, and last year's budget was about twenty-five thousand, or no, about twenty-five percent higher than that sixty-five thousand. I got to chase down the, the rest of the numbers on that and make sure. We are in the process of negotiating a contract with Republic, I'm hoping maybe have something like a final draft in a month, I don't know, I'm guessing, so that one's going to take forward.
Their, their RFP basically included the same annual increases as what we're currently dealing with, so I know that some of you may have heard or may have exposure to separate trash services contracted directly with Republic Services. They sent out notices letting them know that they were going to see a ten to fourteen percent increase due to prices in the landfill. That does not impact our city contract, and it was, it was, it was not an oversight in our RFQ that has been clarified, so. So we're sticking with those numbers.
We're, we're going to see like, we have been like basically a three percent increase every year. Parks budget, I broke this one out a little bit. Last year we had two hundred and one thousand of resort tax, and this year we're looking at two eighty-five. And basically, the big ticket items in that, there's, are, I, I'm proposing that resort tax fund a project that we've been looking into, have architect draw some drawings, create a budget to improve Pride Park, specifically, the, the planters are rotten out, and the benches are falling apart, and the, the stamped concrete is losing its finish, and it would take out the planters, put in a more resilient design, you know, like textured dyed concrete and stone, and incorporate power, water. The benches would be integrated into those planters. They'd have like a nice composite decking is what we had in the design, and a underseat lighting, so it'd give it a good night feel. The slab would come out, we'd run new lines for water and electrical, and then pour new slab, which would be dyed and stamped, and the proposed pattern would have like a rock creek kind of thing going through it, it's kind of cool. I thought it would be a great project for resort tax because it, it's a focal part of downtown, it's getting used by visitors, locals, and it's just a good way to get some resort tax dollars outward, people can see them and not bury them in the ground like a pipe. And originally, I was thinking about trying to do that out of the project budget, but the project budget that we've had, of the eighty-five thousand dollars last year, is a really valuable tool for parks and for Public Works, because it just gives us a latitude to work with these user groups and, and, and do a lot of different things. And in the process of that, we get a lot of buy-in from the user groups, like this is, we, we only spent forty-three to eighty-five this year. I wanted to do a project, the skate park, we just ran out of time, but the Parks Project Fund went towards all these different parks and user groups, and, you know, like, a good example is the baseball. You know, they put their money in it too, they put their labor into it, so our, our dollars are getting leveraged by working with these groups. Like the tennis courts, you know, we went in there and dug it out, and, and we paved it, I think paving was like four grand or something, or three grand. And, and we're going to put in the posts for the. And, and we're going to put in the posts for the new nets and we're going to buy new nets. And they're going to resurface the courts for the $240,000. So being able to work with this group and have this, this tool, that's the Parks Project money, is super valuable. When we first met down there, because we have this, I met the contractors and they're like, well, we got this. So the problem, how are we going to deal with that? It was a low spot. I said, I can do that. You know, they said, well, this thing's grounded over here. I can do that. So it just speeds the projects up and it, it makes it, having the latitude that this, this budget line provides is very valuable. And you can see we, we kind of hit everybody. I, I can't think of what's missing there in terms of parks. So it's a, it's a, it's a powerful part of the budget. And planning pool, pretty much same budget as last year.
Question for you on the Parks budget?
Where's the pool at? Lost it.
A big hole in the ground. Lost water.
You've got to be more specific in this town.
Yeah, fair enough. Question on the Parks budget. So we had $43,000 that was left over or remaining from the Parks Project budget?
Um, no, that's what, that's.
I'm not leaving.
That one.
That's, that's what we spent out of the $85.
Right, so.
So there's $40,000 we didn't spend.
Right.
Yeah, because there was, there was a project that I was, it was actually, it's been on the books since before I got here. I think Jim had it on his to-do list. It's the east side of the skate park where it's unfinished part. What I was hoping to do is get that in this year's budget and that was going to be about 30 grand. But we just didn't make it.
Is that going to be something that carries over for that same project next year? Or is that something that can be reallocated either to the Brewery Hill project if we need match funds? Or to the Pride Park update, to where we're not necessarily seeing the Parks budget go from $200,000 to $280,000? And apologies, my numbers are incorrect.
Yeah, no, I, we, we could. We're not going to get as much done. I mean, if, if we, if we take the whole Parks Project budget and put it to Pride Park.
Oh, no, I'm not suggesting that. I'm suggesting just the 40 left over from this year to offset some of that cost.
How does that work? The, the 42 that's left over in Parks Project this year, does that just get?
It's just left over.
Goes back in.
We, we try not to encourage, you must spend it or you lose it environment. So, yeah.
Yep, that's what I figured. There'd be a rollover.
Still there for that.
I just was wondering if that's a project that they intend to roll over to next year? Or if it's something that is the Pride Park project or the Brewery Hill project a higher priority?
I think if it's the skateboard project, it just didn't happen last year. It happens this year, but that same money goes to it.
Okay.
So we're not dictated by the July, Happy New Year, July 1st, right?
So that's basically my question.
Yeah, and, you know, and this is a proposal and there's, there's multiple ways to go about this. When I first started looking at the Pride Park project stuff, I was thinking, well, I think I brought this up at Resort Tax Committee, was like maybe, you know, a chunk and then we'll go beat the streets or look for a grant. And it felt like there was support there to just fund it. And that's really attractive because if it's totally funded, then that's a project that could happen very soon. If we have to go pound around and get money, we're down the road at least a year or two, you know.
Yeah.
So, and again, so, I mean, it's just, there's, there's, there's multiple ways to move forward. This, this is just what public works is proposing.
Also, what's not listed on there, that, that's, again, this is a budget that's changing as we go through our meetings. We have specifically set aside from Resort Tax some money for the Brewery Hill. You know, that's looking down a couple of years down the road. We're setting money aside, again, allocating it, planning for it. It won't get spent.
Yep.
But it'll be there to roll over for the next year as that project comes in.
Planning ahead.
Budgeting.
Budgeting.
And I think, you know, as we get closer, but as we work through it, everybody knows that you can reach out to me if you have questions on this stuff. Or if Mayor, if you'd like another presentation, and we get closer, we can run through it again.
I'd like to see a presentation on the Pride Park because it sounds like there's a lot of neat food ads. Not like, not today, but like.
I think I have it on the screen.
Is this all in the capital improvement plan?
The, the, the capital improvement plan certainly drives a lot of the things in here, not necessarily all of them. And going back to, we are allowed to do things that are not on the capital improvements plan. But the capital improvements plan serves two folds. It reminds us every year, this is stuff that still needs to be done. The 16-inch bypass, case in point, that's been there for 25 years now. It's been on there and we're finally getting it done. And it has the added bonus that we can use it to help find funding mechanisms, grants and stuff. Oh yeah, we thought about this before. Thank you for coming up with the grant. And oh, we're coming up with the project because you're giving away money. But yes, it's very, very, it, it is related to, and, and there's already, you know, we heard comments today about, somebody mentioned the, the parking lot over at, at, at the Civic Center. Why isn't that not included in, in capital improvement plan? Make a note, we'll get there, you know, the next time. We can still do it. We can still have that tracking there. But, did I answer the question?
Thank you. It seemed like there were a lot of.
Mike, was there a slide you were looking for that you didn't get to when you went into the micro mode that we can't read?
Just the pool.
What?
You, you were, you said like you were looking, you were looking for an additional slide.
Oh, no, I, I don't know how I would do that. I click on stuff.
It was just a pool of slides and we saw it, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. And then, um, so water and sewer, you said 50/50. Is that about the expense and the commitment? Um, water and sewer, did you say 50/50?
So there are some things that are purchased that are used for both of them. So for instance, the ground ether, you use it to thaw pipes. Sometimes those pipes are sewer. Sometimes those pipes are water.
Okay.
Or the dump truck or the back truck. So there are several things that we're allowed to. So, so enterprise funds, which is where the fees come from when you pay your utilities bills, those can only be spent on those utilities. It's like its own little enterprise that runs there. And so what happens if you buy a tool that's going to be used by both departments? You split out the cost between those two enterprises. And that's one of the things the auditors do when they come in and check, yes, yes, that, that tracks and goes across there. And you'll also see that, so like the people in the front office, you'll see part of their salaries or, you know, a lot of them, their salaries are partially paid by water, partially paid by sewer. We've done our best to approximate how much of their time is utilized for each of those things. And so even for the council, there's a small portion of council and, and mayor that actually comes from water and sewer because we talk about water and sewer.
Yeah, I mean, no, but yeah, 50/50 expense, that a bull.
Yeah, and, and, and if there's something that comes up and it's going to be 75% water or 25%, it can be split that way too. But it's just, you try to do your best to estimate it and know that the auditors are going to come check and validate your math.
Thank you.
Other questions for Mike from the table? Again, I'll reiterate Mike's starting point. This is still in process and like today's budget is different than it was yesterday. And, and I anticipate you're going to see a, a lot of motion in, in the next month as, as we formalize and get this. It's an important part of what we do.
Lot of work, but thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you, Mike. Cross the board. Crushing it, Mike.
All right, thank you, Mike. All right, anything else from admin and finance?
Uh, no, we just, um, we were working on the resort tax budget today. And, um, we got through, uh, most of it. So we have one little section of resort tax left. And then we'll be going into the enterprise funds, which are fairly straightforward and not a lot of controversy. And that's it.
All right. Any questions for admin and finance before we move on? All right. Land use and planning, and to that, I'm going to look to Committee Chair Tupin.
Um, we just spent the entire time talking about the growth policy and nailing down those amendments. So, uh, next up, downtown plans. So get ready, folks. Let's do it again.
I would like to add a little bit of discussion to land use and planning. Councilmember Tupin has put together a very good outline and, and there's going to be a very in-depth conversation on how do we allocate city lands, particularly when you have multiple people vying for them? Whether that be an open space that we're going to put an observatory in? Whether that be Lions Park that they want to talk about putting an ice rink in? And, and one of the oh no moments that I've had, and it's, it's come up through a couple of different things, that there's a lot of these things that have started and are quite far down the path. And it's like, we're still doing things while this is all here. And so I'm, I'm kind of, I want to double check and make sure that we aren't making assumptions and going down the lines without giving council its due opportunity to say, yes, we agree with that resource. Let me, let me, so.
And not just council, so I can put this in as well, but also the city and the public.
Yeah, the, the, the public to, to voice their opinion and then council takes that in as they weigh those decisions.
As highest and best use.
Yeah.
Of city-owned land.
Yeah, so, so there's a couple of them in there. One of them that I think I feel pretty good on, I will tell you, I will feel better if, if, if council says, yep, proceed, field school park. Now, that's a little bit different because that's a maintenance issue. That, that field has gone away. We've already gone in and we've resurfaced it. And part of that was because they came in and said, we can raise $40,000 to go in and put a finish on this if you guys will fix the holes. So we said, yeah, let's do that. And, and we were at a pretty good agreement and understanding between a couple of primary users of that space, which is the tennis folks and the pickleball folks. And in fairness, I sat in on all those meetings and everybody was happy and they had a pitcher that has been the pitcher all along. And then suddenly there was a, no wait, that doesn't work for this group a little bit, or that doesn't work for that group. The good news is, is I think that we're pretty, that everybody's pretty much on page with going what kind of those groups had, had agreed on and signed in on. But in fairness, we haven't sat down and had a conversation at council and said, hey, this is, we're, we're refinishing field school park. It's going to have a dedicated tennis court. It's going to have four dedicated pickleball courts. And the one in the middle is going to be for both surfaces. It's going to have double lines. It's going to be two pickleball courts and two tennis courts, which is what they have over there right now. And frankly, we have a contract set up.
Can be used for tennis as well.
Yeah, and, 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 and so that's where the discussion is, is there's temporary lines they can put on so it can be used for tennis as well. And they put the nets and stuff in there. But this is one of those oh no moments. Should I have gone to council? We think this is great and everybody's on board.
Did you take up more space than they were originally taking?
Nope, it's, it's, it's the same foot, same footprint is there.
Basically, when they refinish it, they're going to put a different, different lines on parts of it to accommodate pickleball instead of just tennis. But it's going to have both.
So, and, and that's a maintenance project. Pride, Pride Park is an existing downtown thing. And, and we've talked about spending money on it or, you know, so that's kind of where a lot of times it makes it to council is, let's approve a budget to, to put $85,000 to that. Have we had, have we had a discussion on that? So as we have this discussion about highest and best use of city resources, the different buying interests, another, uh, another couple that are, that are really significant, um, the. Yeah, I'm looking for the, the, um, the foundation put in for a very, very large grant. I mean, we think of it as a city project because it's city stuff. But the reality is, is it's a project that, that a different group is coming in with, with several million dollars. And the assumption is, what, that what they want to do is they, what they proposed is, hey, we can put a permanent slab inside of Lions Park, which will allow you to have ice skating rink consistently from October 31st to, 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 to St. Patrick's Day. Yay, that's wonderful. Well, wait, that's city land. The reality is, we're quite far down that discussion and we haven't really yet had a resolution of intent from the council that says, yes, pursue that. Or looking at, which is also the opportunity where the public has their opportunity to come and, and make their, those, their voices. We have the same thing at Coal Miners Park, where we have baseball, we have soccer, we have frisbee golf. We have the, the talk and conversations. We've looked at some land that's adjacent. It's in between what we have as Coal Miners Park and the high school, who we've said, that's a wonderful place to put tennis courts. And hey, it's great. And it's, and it's like, we haven't had that conversation at council. And so, so one of my concerns and worries is, as we're in the process of laying out the groundwork to, to say how we do this for the next 20 years, let's be predictable and scalable. We've got a half a dozen different projects and things that are out there. And I'm kind of looking for, for some guidance and forgiveness maybe. Yes, move forward with the, with the, the field school resurfacing project. That's the, the most immediate one. But I'm open to ideas and suggestions about how do we handle this while the rules are still being stirred in concrete, let alone set and pouring? How do we, how do we handle this going forward? Councilmember Ru.
I think about this all the time and I would, there's nothing to decide, of course, tonight. But I'd just like this body to think about parks, parks in your hometown, parks where you grew up. And, um, did they change? Were they allowed to have other things? Do they take, you're, you're, if you allow something to come in, you're taking away park space and we don't get more park space. Once it's gone, it's gone. So just think about the historical nature of parks and why they're parks. And when we agree to these additions, we're losing park space. And being on Parks Board, we are now reading the 2015 Parks Recommendation. 10 years ago, they said, we need more park space. So we've lost 10 years to find land, pay for it, secure it. And that's another thing I'd like to, us to think about in a year or two, we, well, less than that, I hope. Where can we find more land for a park? Because my, my theory is everyone's moving out there, find a park out there that's near the bike path. But, but historically, think about parks. Once something's gone, it's gone. And so if we keep allowing more additions like the skating rink, is that where we want Lions Park to be? Do we want Lions Park to look like that? You, I drive by there and there's kids are playing and it's, I don't know, just think about. What, what historically is a park to you in your memories as a child?
Other, other comments or thoughts from the table?
I'll, I'll just say that, um, I, I think that if it is an improvement or a maintenance type thing, an improvement on an existing structure type of thing or a maintenance type thing, I don't necessarily feel that, I mean, if you want a resolution from council, I don't think it's that big of a deal, especially maintenance type things. You resurfaced, it, it needed to be done. It's, the tennis courts have been a mess. And, um, you know, whether or not it's a change of use or not, might be another story. But if those two groups can work it out, then I don't necessarily see that council needs to step in, you know, with that. As long as those two user groups can, can share and play, play nights in the sandbox.
What, what happens if they don't? I mean, this, this one has worked out well and I went.
Yeah.
But what happens if they don't?
Well, if they don't, then, I mean, then that definitely becomes, um, if, if it's a change of use overall of a park, then I do believe that that needs to go to council. You know, especially if it's a change of use to a park. To Ann's point, you know, when we had a park that was dedicated just to open space and walking trails and things like that and then we put a structure on it, we changed that park. That is not, you know, so that does need to go to council and that does need to have public input. I, I absolutely agree with that. And then, um, to, to Ann's point, I mean, most of the parks that I grew up in, in Miles City had waiting pools and they had, you know, it was summertime and 100 degree weather. So there was always water features all summer, in every park that was in Miles City. There was either playground equipment or water features or things like that. Where up here, we seem to value more just tranquil, tranquility and trails and. So it, it kind of depends on the community that you're in.
I think there's a variety. I think.
Yeah, there is. But I think it, it depends on the community that you're in and that's where the public input has to come into play.
And we do, we do look for opportunities to add parks. I mean, Van Dyke Park came about while I was on council, which was not that many years ago. We're, we're adding what I presume, you know, Uncle Milty's or whatever we end up calling that. That's going to be a park that's open space and some use.
Hopefully, hopefully it'll eventually be part of Finn Park. It'll all be connected.
Hoping, hoping we'll add another park that's right next to it for, for what that is.
And then it will all connect from Finn Park to.
I, I hope so. We're continuing to look for those opportunities. So, and, and then to, to Ann's point, when subdivisions come in, there are requirements that they have to set aside a certain amount of space to do that, which is like where Moran Park came. Now, we haven't done a whole lot to develop that. It gets mowed. But, but, but as new subdivisions come on, we do require that as, as one of that. And that's driven by state mandates.
And that's actually something in our growth policy that we have said stray away and avoid any cash in lieu of park space. Try and preserve that and keep that. Try and preserve that and keep that as a real base.
We've said, yeah, they're not allowed to come in and say, we want to build, so we'll give you cash. No, 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 we'll take the park thing.
Yeah.
Councilmember Conley, thank you for your patience.
The other concern that I have is, yes, we have these groups that are taking care of our parks, but what happens when that group disbands? So we have to also consider that if, for instance, the group that is in charge of the Whistler Observatory, if they disband, now that observatory falls to the city to maintain or...
We have that happening, like, you know, we're mowing the soccer fields now, last prior soccer mode, but...
The gazebo was built by somebody at some point in time.
But we need to remember that these people come and go and we may have to maintain that. So before we approve something, we have to be ready to accept.
I think you should make the assumption that we're gonna take care of it.
Yeah.
And that is something that we have to always keep in mind.
And again, the reason that I'm having this conversation and thank you very much for your input, just like we did when there was a request for trees up in Van Dyke Park, I'm doing my best to read into the future what I think that policy looks like and I'm trying to do that. And there may be some times where I make guesses and I kind of come in here and I'll try not to be behind the ball, it's like, oh, we have this change coming in, I hope we did it right, or I'm gonna try to include council, but I will look for you guys to say, yeah. And discussions like this help me understand what the intent of council is, so...
So to kind of go to that and what our goal is in Land Use and Planning, he has made the big request of, I need rules, procedure and process, which is a very fair request. We are making the realistic understanding of the fact that this is a big request, so this is going to be a longer process than three weeks from now.
Absolutely. And we've got, and we've got a half a dozen projects that, like I said, have to happen while this is still going on.
So specifically what we're gonna be looking at, MOUs, Title Eight, again, previous uses, doing some sort of metered scale or like, sort of like, application process, also providing, getting input from Public Works, Parks Board, Planning Board, et cetera, because it's actually probably gonna likely be a part of any sort of application process. And in that process, we're also gonna be looking at cleaning up MOUs and having requirement standards for each one of those, to where every MOU has to have certain criteria, no matter what built into it. So it's, again, this is a big, big, big one.
Big deal.
Yeah, so it's gonna be really fun, though.
So in the interest of time, let me just last pass anything, Land Use and Planning?
We'll still consider...
For that conversation?
Public Works.
All right, and the last one, Public Works, and for that I'm going to go to Committee Chair Rawning.
Oh, well, you once again covered most of it, the updates from Mike, where most of those were in the mayor's comments, so...
There is a MSEP planning grant that will be for action next time. Are there any questions on that or Mike kind of explained where that's coming from already or on how we utilize that?
Yes. And then, you know, and he's working really hard with Republic Services on the contract, so, you know, we kind of touched on that. There's a couple of possibilities moving forward that may be exciting or maybe not with curbside recycling, but, you know, it's gonna cost a lot.
So all your trash bill.
So we, as a council, will, you know, after he nails down all that and has the actual numbers for us, we as council will have to decide how we wanna move forward or if we wanna move forward with that, so...
Basically, it's a contract that we're trying to build right now, it will be a contract that we can get approved, hopefully within a month or so. It will include in there the particulars of what some recycling options would look like, but we don't have to agree to those right now, we can do it down the road, it's gonna take time to go through that, but we, it's important we get a contract in place, so that's why we're doing it this way.
I would anticipate up for action next time too, even though it's not here yet. Lonnie, if you will please make a note of it. Under Public Works, we're probably gonna have a letter of continuance, I don't know what to call it, it's basically a holdover, a temporary holdover that says, we are continuing to utilize Republic Services even though we haven't issued a new contract yet. But because that has dollars involved, I will look to council's authorization to sign that letter that says, we're gonna continue giving you money and you continue taking our trash while we're working out the details. We anticipate they'll be sending that down, so, but I would anticipate that being up for action.
We'll have to talk to Republic about that because the letter that they're requesting from us is just a letter saying that after reviewing our RFPs, that we chose to work on a contract with them.
Yeah, and what I'm saying is, because there's money involved, I'm gonna wanna get that letter to them for approval.
Yeah, yeah, but we're gonna send them two letters.
Or just include it within that same letter, so...
And another thing is, is that apparently we have eighteen hundred cans and the city has assessed two hundred and sixty of those and seventy-six of those are not functioning. So, and apparently Republic has some, if we do, which we probably will go with them, they do have some lighter cans with that open easier, so...
Yeah, and that's...
All in.
That's in the future.
In the future.
In the meantime, they're gonna start preparing.
Yes, yes. So I think that's all I have unless anybody has anything else that I forgot.
Any other questions for Public Works? All right, correspondence, this is an opportunity for any council members to bring forth any correspondence that may have come in later directly to them and therefore not included in the packet. There was a question, can somebody mention correspondence from somebody that doesn't wanna become public? Absolutely. Or just any correspondence that kind of introduces stuff to the council so we can plan for future? Did I cover a good envelope with that? Anything anybody would like to add to that discussion? All right, seeing none, we will go to our final agenda item, which is public comment. I'm gonna go ahead and open that.
Go, Angie.
Public comment for anyone who would like to address the council on anything within their purview, looking to the room, seeing no action in the room, looking to online to see if there's cameras flipping on, or hands waved, or mics coming off, seeing none going once, none going twice, and three times we'll close the public comment. Thanks for sticking with us, those that have. And with that, I don't know if you were...